My name is Kua Bank and I'm the owner of the property on thirty-six-hundred British Road in Madison, Wisconsin. I didn't know that I would have more opportunity to speak before you, so I already prepared a written statement, but thank, thanks to Mr. Tucker told me that Mr. City and I would have unlimited opportunity, so that I'm gonna read my statement to you.
If you could, okay, before, before we begin that, if you do have cell phones, if you could please put them on vibrate or silence, please, so we don't have any disruption. Thank you. Proceed, Mr. Bank.
I do bring about twenty copies here, so if my neighbors, someone like to have it, this is also for you. Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Tucker, and he has been very kind even to tell me that this may be, this may put me into trouble, and what I met, met, met with him, he was very kind. He also explained to me that, you know, he can help me to try to understand what I'm doing. What I was really impressed with, with Mr. Tucker, is that he's, after the meeting, he even thanked me for doing this, so I, I really appreciate that. This is none of our individuals' decision whether or not we should help the homeless people, this is the government. And I hate to say this, but government is supposed to be for the people, but sometimes when we are holding that position, we are propelled by our supervisor and our leader to act what is not in our best conscience. Second thing, let me pass on. Second thing, I have to thank my neighbor, my good neighbors, for being patient with me and with the homeless people, only until April sixteen. I believe that if our city and county leader should take their responsibility seriously to uphold the welfare, well-being, safety, and protection of all citizens, as they are already written in chapter twenty-eight, Wisconsin Constitution and the United States Constitution, then neither my family nor my neighbors would have to protect these people during this very cold season. I also want to thank one of my neighbors who called me, I think yesterday, and his name was Matt. And also thank all those, all the neighbors who also called me, but Matt gonna ask me a question, "How can I help you?" And I didn't know how to answer Matt's question. After thinking now, I, I should have said, "Matt, just go say hello to them." Matt even said he asked his church for help, but they did not reply. So, some of you asked me a very good question, "Why are you doing this to our neighbors?" And I tell you that it is not my heart. Every logical reason told me not to help these homeless people. Who would want to be associated with this very bottom, the lowest people? But it is my heart in seeing the cold, the wet, and the suffering of these people. This cold winter that really bothered me. You know, if you talk to my wife, my children, I don't cry. I'm very tough, but I cried. I cried when I went to see them at the Totten Creek. It was raining, it was cold. And I remember one time, I went as a chaperone with my daughter Amanda, with the youth campaign. It was August, it was terrible because it was raining, and it was cold, and we couldn't get out very much. And imagine, give me a time, it was cold, snow. I cried. So, you know, I, I, I am a human being, I'm not an animal. The way I see, we treat these people, sometimes our words than we treat our own animals. Whether you, I, or these troubled homeless people, I believe it now, it's not really a matter. Millions of years ago, we came from the same ancestor. If you cut inside our body, we have the same organs, same blood, same tissues. I may be from Asia, but I have the same organs as any one of you. We all have feelings and we all have pains. It does not really make sense why some people have everything so good, they didn't have to work hard for it. But then, at the same time, why do some people always have a problem no matter how hard they try? I think about it, and if we want to help people with our head, we would ask the question, "Do these troubled people deserve our help?" But sometimes when we, when we ask our heart, the question shouldn't be, "Do I deserve to help these people?" You and I, our neighbors, we are not gonna get any reward for helping these homeless people. No, but I believe that in our heart, we will get the reward and inherit it. I also want to thank my family, my children to be here. They don't have to be here, but they are here to learn. Even though they told me, "We don't want to lose eleven thousand dollars of fine by the city of Madison," but I want my children to understand, to learn, many things. One of the things is, we need to work very hard for our lives, as I've tried, as with our father, as a refugee. So we don't have to be without a place to live like these homeless people. I took them to see the homeless people, my youngest children. I told my other, all the children, "Drive by and talk to them." Some of my neighbors are so afraid even to go close to them. But no matter how hard you are trying to work for your life, I can tell you that sometimes even hardworking people find problems at their home. My wife and I, we work very hard, have a good job, we have a good income, we own some relative property, and recently, we lost some of those homes through foreclosure, not by our mistake, but everything went down, everything went down. And recently, my Amanda, she became freshman in college, she wanted to get out of the house, and she, and her friends wants to help me to apply for an apartment, and I didn't want to, but because of her, I tried, and you know what? That landlord denied my application. Imagine, I was shocked. And this year, I also tried to rent an office space, and that landlord to deny my application. So when you think about it, if I cannot get a rent for application, to place a rent, how do these more troubled homeless people would get a place to rent? Some people told me, "Oh, there aren't many homes that you can find," but that's not true. I also want my children to learn that even when you work so hard, everything seems to be so fine, there are so many problems and mistakes in our life. Some of the problem and mistakes will knock us down all the way to the bottom. We may lose our jobs, our home, our family, and especially our dignity. In this country, it is strange, because this country, it is not so easy just to get up again, because the system, this country is designed to keep record of what you did wrong. And the landlord, and the employer, and our other people will not be nice to you again. So one person lost everything, as I saw these people. Sometimes they use drugs, they use alcohol, they have mental problems, just to get a brief and some relief in life. I also want my children to learn that when you have a better life than others, two things you need to do. One is, help those who cannot help you, but the second thing is, don't hurt them. Helping many times does not mean that you have to give yourself up and go for them, just by being, being nice, saying good words, have a good attitude, that's nice enough. Especially when this very cold winter time, I think we can at least keep, and at least trouble people's hearts a little warmer, even though the body is cold. The, the, the best thing is, do not condemn them by such words as, "Get a job," we want to want you around here, or say something that is just very hurtful. They have feeling too. And our lives can change anytime without notice, as in life. My life changed many times. We all may be in trouble sometimes in our lives, and how do we feel when other condemn us when we are already so damaged by these people? I also want to tell my children that, do the right thing, even when other people will judge you wrong. If our early colonies in America were not willing to fight for the imperial English government in order for us to gain the right of independence and freedom, even President Lincoln and many Americans were not willing to sacrifice their life during the American Civil War, so they can get rid of the slavery system. And if, if it rolls apart, the black American lady, if she was not willing, if she was willing to sit in the bath in violation of the unjust non-adequate law, if our American soldiers now are willing to fight, learn all the foreign country era, Afghanistan, just so those people can also have their freedom and privacy we have here, and I can tell you, my family is willing to be criticized, and we are willing to pay the eleven thousand dollars fine. Now, I always told my children, and I've heard this many times, they don't believe it, but I told them, "Money is not a problem, attitude is. If you're nice to me, I can do anything, I can't give you the money, but if you are not nice to me, I will not give you anything." When, when my family and I would have fun sometime, and I, I often ask them a very stupid question, again, again, and again, so many times, and the question was, "What is the problem?" And now, even my youngest children understand what I expect the answer to be. The answer is, "There's no problem." And I would tell them, "In this world, there are always problems, when there is no problem, then that is the problem of itself." Sometimes it causes problems for ourselves, sometimes other people, other circumstances cause problems for us. Nobody can stop problems, but we can all try to solve and alleviate some of these problems. I also want to tell my children that we need to stand up for those who cannot stand up for themselves. When you help those who cannot help themselves, they will appreciate you. But in my experience, when I try to help those who don't really need my help, they may even laugh at me. You know, I like to watch animal television show, and sometimes I, I compete with my children to watch TV, and they don't understand it. But I learned a lot from watching the animal kingdom. It is sad, but it is also good. Some animals have a marked territories, and if anyone tries to enter their territory, it will get severe punishment. Some animals bite, kill, and even eat their own kind. But some animals, like the king penguin, they live in southern Georgia. They are different. I watched the television, and it was, it was very cold in southern Georgia, and the king penguin would huddle together, so the body, the combined body heat would be warm enough for everybody. And when, when the blizzard of very cold winters would come in, they would circle around, everybody would take turns to be on the outside, so everybody can also get a little bit warm inside. Now, when I went to college, I learned from my sociology class that human is called a societal animal. So, but what my sociology teacher did not tell me is that, there are many species, there are many kind of human, human. Some animal, some, some human have a territory where they're bound. Some human even bite and kill and eat their own kind. As a criminal lawyer familiar, I know that, some human being bite, kill, and eat their own kind. But then, there are some humans who have a heart like a king penguin, and someone told me that it is all depends on each person, how the each person is brought up by their parents or society. And I just hope that I learned lesson from this experience, I hope that my life from now on, my children's life, will be like a king penguin. I can tell you that I'm not afraid of the eleven thousand dollars fine, I'm here not to defend these homeless people who are here today. I cannot help them. Like my neighbor spoke to me, "How can I help you to help them?" And I couldn't tell him how, because I cannot help them. But I know that my God and all of us together, we can. I'm here only to defend my own conscience, just my own conscience. I challenge this not because of Mr. Tucker, not because of any person, I'm challenging my own conscience here. You know, I, I watched Occupy Madison for many years on East Washington and many places, and I saw wherever they laid their tents on, for the past few years, our dear neighbors, very good neighbors, and our government leaders, always were embarrassed by what they saw, they did not want these people to be around. They would move from place to place for seven, twenty-seven times, within sixteen months, I believe. You know, some, I, I would read and I would saw, I, I would understand that some, some people would say that, you know, these, these were unclean homeless tents, they would reduce our real estate property value. I know for fact that it is not true. What brought my property value down is the heartless governmental, governmental policy. You know, they spent billions of dollars bailing out banks. Now, banks are making profits, what about the homeowners? Now, we are losing our property value, not because of the tents, not because our neighbors next door went to foreclosure, but it is, it is all across America. And now, I know that many of the people who foreclosed their home are getting food pantry, from the community food pantry, some may not even get place to rent, because when you have a foreclosure, you have a bad credit. So, so people even say, "That is, are people with problems, and we don't want these problems in our neighbors." And I can tell you that, from my experience being in court every day for four years as a assistant public defender before, what I saw was sad. Most of the problems were created by our domestic family members, our partners, our spouse, our friends, our partners, and the people we trust. Nowadays, there are so many criminal sensations that are on TV, they call me a name, and most of them are about people who you know, hurt you. So, don't be afraid of these homeless people. Oh, they also say that there are so many homes and shelters around here that they could have gone to, and I like to ask, "How many of us would actually allow these troubled people to be in our home, even at our vacant home, or vacant commercial building?" I did. I did twice, not just on my land, but on my vacant building. Now, the last time, it was before us, and I'm not embarrassed, and it was pretty cold recently, and they, they called around and no one would take them, just for a couple nights, and I was really lucky to do, because I already helped them once, you know, for a few days, and I lost money the first time, but fine. And I said, "Okay, if you cannot find a church or any other place, come." They came, and unfortunately, one or two of those homeless people got into trouble, and they called the police. I was in trouble, and I was so sad, I didn't want to tell my wife, because she would have publicly said, "See, I told you, I told you." I didn't tell her, maybe I didn't even, she didn't even know yet. But I called my son, I called my son Roger, who is going to my university in Alaska and say, "Man," and I talked to him and said, "I just feel so bad, I feel like these people letting me down." And my son told me that, "Maybe God is just testing you, to maybe feel good again." And when I realized that, if they don't have problem, they don't need my help. Again, I also want to tell my children, I've seen that, sometimes I, I saw these homeless people, and people don't want to go close to them, but they would stand far away, they would take pictures, probably to see how dirty, how bad, how unclean it is, but I visited them. The first time I visited them, visited them was because I heard that they would be kicked out from the East Washington property, and I, I was driving to work. Usually, I don't dress in suit, but that day, I was going to court, so I dressed in suit, so I said, "Must be unusual for me to take a detour and dress in suit to see these homeless people," because they want to say, "Maybe I could be a governmental official." But when I went to them far away, I wanted to make sure they know, I say, "Hi, how you doing?" And they say hi back to me, and we talked about, talked about, and they told me a really good story, but sad story. So don't be afraid of them, or talk to them. They look like me, they respect me, because I respect them, and I think about that, that I have a warm home for my family, they have nothing, not even a place to lay on their tents. You know, many times, during this cold winter, I turn my heat out, my furnace out, but then I thought about, when I visit these people, they would promote snow around the tents for better insulation. When the, the winter was snowing and then raining, and snowing and raining, I went to see them one time, and I was, that, that was the time I cried, because at my house, when it was raining, I would turn my television on, so I did not hear the rains. But for these people, nothing, they were out in open field with snow and with rain. And when they were being kicked out from Totten Creek, they told me that the ice built up so bad around their tents, and it was so hard to move the tents to my land. That is sad. I can tell you that, I, as a taxpayer, and many of you who are citizens, to pay so much tax in so many forms to our, to our government, government leaders, this is not our problem, this is not my problem, this is not my neighbor's problem, I don't know why we are even here, I don't know why I'm here, I don't know why I have to appear just to do what I'm doing. That would should be the job of our, our government leaders. I thought about many times, I should say, should I close my eyes, my ears, like I never saw these people, I never saw these people, and I would just blame them to make me feel good, like I am better, I'm not like these troubled people. Should I do that, or should I lose many sleeps, and possibly eleven thousand dollars? You can ask my wife, my children, "I didn't sleep very much, I spent so many nights thinking, thinking, what am I doing wrong?" I lost many nights of sleep, but that's fine, that's fine. The easy for me is pretty clear, way to help these people, and I hope we all do the same thing. Now, this is American phrase that I learned, "What goes around, comes around." And if you shut your eyes and ears, when people need your help, I can tell you, and you have to tell yourself, we will get troubled in our lifetime, and when people don't help us, we cannot blame them. Although I don't practice lawyers, it's full time now, I do many volunteer, uh, legal service, but throughout my twenty years as a lawyer, I learned that it's not the law, it's not the written law, it is about who the judge is, it's about how to convince the jury, it's not the law. An attorney, O'Brien and I, we know each other, I mean, we don't each other personally, as a lawyer, everything is about negotiation, about bargaining, that is not in the law, but people, we make common sense, we think what is appropriate, what is fair, what is equitable. Now, I wanted to decide to become a lawyer, I took a class in college, it was a constitutional class, and I was in love, because it was so short, so precise, and it limits the government's power, because our forefather would suffer so much through the hands of the government, and they give so much powers to the people. Now, there are, the law didn't prove it just as so big, even lawyers, we don't understand anymore. But it is not about the law, it is about the hearts and the minds of the people. It is always about who decide what the law is. Again, I wanted to say that laws are made to be fair and equitable, when the law is not fair and not equitable to a situation, the judge and jury, where we know the law, many times, and take the side of fairness and equity. When I practiced criminal law, I represent a Monge crime, he married a very young girl, a Monge girl, and he was charged with a very serious sexual assault crime, and from my experience of negotiating, I thought I negotiated a very good deal for him, you know, present time, just probation, and with, with a felony conviction. And when both the assistant D and I, we proposed a negotiation plan to the judge, and the judge said, "I'm not gonna allow this young man to have a felony record, so you guys better go back, negotiate again." So we did, and that man didn't have a felony record. After he finished his probation, the judge amended that felony to a misdemeanor. And that one, that is the law, it is not about A, B, C. I'm sorry, I did too much time, but I lost many sleeps. I, I feel sad, I thought I did something good, but I, when I realized that, when the city of Madison knew that these people were being moved for twenty-six, twenty-seven location, and some of those locations were owned by the city, some of those locations were owned by the county, or no port, some may have owned by private properties, and then, never threatened anybody. The city should issue a citation to the city itself, but it is true. Now, when it came to me, they said, "You cannot do that." And to me, that is wrong, that's wrong. In this country, we make more than discrimination, unequal protections under our constitution. But to me, it is a shameful, unfair, and unjust enforcement. Again, I'm not here to defend my goodwill or my selfish action to bring this problem to my neighbors. I'm not here to even defend my action under our city ordinance, twenty-eight point zero nine one thousand one. You can read, you can read that, you can read the entire chapter twenty-eight, and the entire general, Madison's general ordinance, you will not find any words in that entire thousand page saying that campaign is a prohibited use. The idea that anything that is not permitted is therefore not allowed, or it is prohibited, it violates our constitution, it is unconscionable, and that is uncontrollable powers that we as a citizen have not granted to the government. I can tell you, many of your own home, that most of your homes are zoned under twenty-eight point zero three-two, if single family, mother family, all under that now. And if you look at the table, twenty-eight C point one, there are four pages, if you look at those leads, if you look at those leads. For those animal lovers, I can tell you that, the only thing they're gonna find about animal is that keeping of chickens is a permitted use. There's nothing in there that keeping dog, keeping cat, keeping bird is a permitted use. So if the city can come to you, see your dog, and they say, "Sorry, it is not in the permit use." You'll be in trouble. If you put a temporary or permanent pool in your backyard, it is not listed in here. The list could be gone, gone, going long here. Just because the city, someone forgot to put a permit use in there. Now they say that anything that is not in that list, it is a prohibited use. Again, I was in love with our constitution because it says, "Any powers that is not granted to the government reserve belong to the people." And as a lawyer, how can I read this ordinance and understand that this is a prohibited use? When you read the statutes, criminal statutes and any citation, it would say, if you do this thing, that is wrong. Then I understand. But this ordinance doesn't say that. This ordinance punish for things that it is not listed. And that is wrong. You know, if the government doesn't like you, like they did not like me, they would come to you and they would say, "Sorry, it is not permitted use." I know why they did not like me. Because it happened twenty-six, twenty-seven locations already and nothing happened. And suddenly, an Asian person like me came in, did something that would embarrass our politician. And they would force Mr. Tager to give a job. I'm here to ask every one of us who are human beings to share our burdens, to share the trouble of these homeless people. I don't know about you, but cold can be very painful and very torture. So be like a pink, the king penguin. Keep these people warm just a little. I'm not asking a permanent encampment on this ground. It was between the city and the county. The county extended the deadline at Totem Creek again and again. And suddenly, they say, "No more extension." And the camp at the south of Madison is not going to open until April sixteenth. These people have no place to go. I have a home to go. And what should I say? So even when Mr. Tager politely warned me before these people came, you know, this may be a violation of our zoning ordinance. I had no choice. How do I turn these people away? My land has been vacant for many, many years. And when I saw these people in my land, I was so proud. This is the first American settlers on this land. On this land, I drove by sometime there and I saw my neighbor put trash on my land, you know, they saw that, I didn't say anything. Because it is just a vacant land. I saw deer, I saw bird, I saw squirrel. They could live there. But these human beings cannot live there. That I cannot understand. So I'm asking you, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but I'm asking you, don't make decision for me. Don't, this is not a appeal for me. Make a decision for common sense for the density of a fellow human being. This city used to be the most, was named the most liberal city in America. I think we would welcome everybody. The fact that the entire city of Madison does not have a permit for camping at all, something's wrong. Something's wrong. This beautiful city has many parks. And we would not allow camping at all, not in mind zoning agriculture, but any zoning here. Somebody forgot. Or somebody intentionally don't want camping here, I don't know. But I'm asking you, you are not city politician, you are not hired by anybody. You are our trust citizens. You have the power as a judge, as a jury, to decide what is fair and equitable. It's not for me, it's for us, for everybody. Attorney O'Brien, we can debate about the laws again and again, as lawyers would do. Doesn't really matter at the end, as a jury, as a judge. Only April sixteenth. Thank you.
Can I pick you back up here?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, would you explain to me, last year you mentioned to us that zoning board of appeals or the council were the only ones that could change the zoning code? Is that true?
There, in, in the old code, there was a section, I can't even remember the specific language, but it said that I believe the plan commission, district older persons and the zoning board of appeals, I, I think those were the three people that could, um, enter like basically sponsor changes to, uh, text amendments to the zoning code. The, uh, new code, uh, I believe only allows older persons and the council or something like that. I, I think that's what it's, I brought it. Um, it's, it's, the zoning board of appeals cannot sponsor a change, however, the zoning board of appeals can provide a, um, a communication. You do that other times with variances to, to carry on a report type of a thing to say, hey, we discovered this continuous problem. We would like you to take a look at it. And we can be the conduit to the policymakers in that regard.
But yeah, I mean, I guess even in the old code, it still had to go through the common council and that procedure. It wouldn't just happen sort of by P F.
Um, as I recall from the years I served on the Z crack, the zoning code rewrite advisory committee.
Thank you for that.
For those of you. Um, you know, we really, and, and the plan commission, when, when the plan commission really took up the, took up the text, we really hammered out and we tried to divide, you know, come up with discussions and, and decisions on all manner of structures and uses. I mean, we talked about, we talked about breweries, brew pubs, distilleries. We talked about, we talked about cooperative housing until the cows came home. We talked about, um, and the differences between that and boarding houses and, and et cetera. Was there, could you refresh my, could you refresh my memory? Because that was years ago and that was a little too mind numbing. Did we ever have a discussion on camping?
I don't particularly recall that. I went to every meeting but like two of them, I think, of a hundred and ten meetings that were kind of had as part of that five-year process.
Yeah.
And I don't particularly recall the conversation of camping coming up. However, we did have some, um, fundamental discussions about the utilization of, of spaces like parks. And we noted that in, in those conversations that there were, uh, accessory uses that were components of parks, like, uh, Warner Park has a, uh, baseball field that's a, um, uh, it's a big operation. It's a big commercial community venture type of a thing. And it also has some private, more private securities, like some of the athletic fields, I think, that, that are fenced in, like the football, kids that play football up there, I guess. Um, and so we talked about the multitudes of uses of, of these areas. And we did, we did touch on some of the aspects that are, that, that are similar to, um, the scenario that is occurring at, uh, Lake Farms Park, which is a, it's a park on the south side of the city of Madison that has a camping facility within it that was mentioned here earlier. And it's, uh, it's like an accessory use to that park, I guess, there.
My other question was, so as this process moves forward, nobody's going to be moved off the property, but Mr. Vang will be fined or has started to, well, he has, I guess he'll be fined as soon as we make a decision? Is that how it works?
Well, our, our thoughts are once the appeal has been, um, completed, we'll, uh, take a look at what our options are in regard to basically compelling compliance on this property. That's what we're, that's our goal is to compel the property to be in compliance.
Okay.
And there are, that we can, um, issue tickets, we could set up a prosecution, but that does go to the municipal court.
Okay. And what's that timeframe?
The timeframe for us, uh, the issuance to the, um, there's the timeline, gosh, I want to say it's usually like a month or two between issuance of ticket, uh, if you got a speeding ticket, how long it is between when you use speeding ticket.
It'll stay on the ticket when your first appearance is.
When your court date is and.
A month.
And I don't think it'll be, it'll be, it won't be before the sixteenth, that's for sure.
What?
A month.
We wouldn't get to court before the sixteenth. I think we're probably into May with our, if we issued citations today. And kind of prosecution is more involved because that, that, uh, that involves a, um, well, you could probably describe that better than me.
Yeah, it's a different format for commencing an action. Instead of having someone issue a citation for a single day, what they do is, um, they're served for a period of time and then you issue a formal complaint based on whatever period of time is in that. And, um, I guess, and then it goes to court after sort of whatever amount of time you're discussing. Um, and it would still go through municipal court. Um, but I guess it's like, I guess the main difference with that is that it would comprise a series of days as opposed to a citation would be a specific instance.
So I guess, so just to clarify, if we were to say, if we were to decide tonight, mm, this is not in our jurisdiction, we can't make a determination and we vote, vote it down, that we render our decision, the chances of Mr. Vang starting to be fined would probably not happen before April sixteenth.
Oh, oh, I, I, I mean, the actual decision on the fine or whatever?
If at the time it made its way through the court processes?
It wouldn't look to.
Right.
Yeah, it wouldn't, that wouldn't happen for long. Wouldn't happen until the court process was completed.
Okay.
But the fine, the days of violation, that we're already there. They're accruing as we, as we sit today.
Okay.
From the, the date of the nineteenth being when the date we, we put for final compliance on the official notice of violation.
So he would still be responsible for anything that he was violating?
Yes.
High school.
Potentially, depending on how it's prosecuted.
Yeah.
Okay. Like he would have the ability to appeal.
Defend it in his court, in an appeal from the decision of the municipal court judge if you so would.
So no matter what we decide tonight, he's going to still be fined? Or not?
Probably. I mean, we're, we're going to review our options and, and decide what, what, which tools we have, how, and how we're going to go to try to compel the property, uh, to be in compliance. I mean, ultimately, we are a compliance driven agency. We look for compliance. We don't look for fines. But fines are the tools that, that, that we use to compel compliance.
Any further questions for staff? Mr. Vang, you have one final opportunity to address us before we, uh, before we deliberate.
Thank you. And I heard Mrs. Hucker correctly explained that there's some very specific use and some very general use. Um, and if you read the zoning code, um, and we were, you know, you were talking about parks and playgrounds. Parks and playgrounds are permitted in agriculture, zoning district. So if you can, um, think about in general, they're all abroad like Mr. Tico's talking about. You know, Warner Park and those things and accessory use. This is already a zone for parks and playgrounds. It's a permit, so, um, that's one way to, you know, to think about it. Um, do we ask a question about how would it happen if you vote down? how would it happen if you vote down, or vote yes tonight? I think, you know, when I read the ordinance, um, your decision whether or not approved or not approved, if you want approved, then I would not do anything, but then, then the city may appeal your decision, you know, to the court. Or if you, um, deny my petition, my appeal, then the city would be happy and then I probably, you know, go further. Um, I don't know if the, uh, the municipal court would be the only one way. The municipal court would be, when, when I challenge the citation, um, but I think, I think there are other options more than that. Um, I, I, I hope we don't go to that, um, options about circuit court in a federal, in a federal, which I stated in my letter that are constitutional violation. I hope we don't go through that because that's going to make all us damaged in somehow, some way. Um, and I don't want to go through that process. Up, up the city doesn't want to go through that process, because when we go through, uh, circuit court and think about, you know, civil rights violation, equal protection and all this, it tend to shock the city. Um, and even though I'm attorney, I don't like going to court. Um, I would rather talking, be talking to my citizens like you are now here, and come up with some general permit under the, the ordinance if you can find, which I think you already heard tonight, saying that, you know, in parks and playgrounds, accessory use is permitted. So, I think you need to think about all that. Um, but, and, and last, I just want to say that all this legal interpretation may not really means much. At the end, it's about your own, uh, so, okay.
Thank you. Uh, I believe a motion to sustain Mr. Vang's appeal would probably be an order.
I'm just going to move approval to start the discussion.
Second.
Okay.
Repeat that, please.
Yeah, we're, motion that's been made has been to approve Mr. Vang's appeal. Ah, guess I may.
Yeah.
Um, well, this is a, um, um, I, I won't address too much of this because this is really not about myself, but it is a, a, this, this application and this whole process is another, you know, kind of a, it's been a long string of frustrations that I get to deal with and live with. Um, I go to work every day for an agency that provides housing for homeless persons with severe mental illnesses, and I have a waiting list with ninety-five applications on it, and I'm telling people every day that I can't help them. I chair the county's homeless issues committee where I meet every other week and listen to heartbreaking story after heartbreaking story. And actually, and, and occasionally, we actually wind up being able to, to, to get some positive change done. Um, but it was clearly too little and, and it is not enough for that. And then I also have to, to deal with this where, you know, we have to make a decision that's absolutely going to affect lives. Um, so that's frustrating for me, but enough of that. What we have before us here is, Mr. Tucker made a, made a decision, Mr. Vang's appealing that decision, our charge is a rather limited one, and that is, do we have to, uh, we have to decide on whether or not Mr. Tucker made a correct decision. Um, Mr. Vang has, uh, presented, uh, an excellent case, um, and is demonstrating a large heartedness that we simply aren't seeing elsewhere in the community, or not enough, that is. Um, and he's also making some very interesting arguments as for how to interpret the ordinances and the constitutional effects of, of the constitutionality of the ordinances. And they're very interesting arguments, and this is absolutely not the venue for them. Um, we heard from a lot of the, uh, we heard from occupiers and, and their advocates here this evening, and they made excellent arguments about, you know, the effects of what is happening and, and the state of homelessness in Madison. I've said it before, and I'm going to say it all the time, that is, you know, criticize them, condemn them, praise them, but you cannot deny the fact that what they've done in the last year plus is shining a very bright light on a very real issue. And that has to be commended. And that has led to change. But alas, a lot of their arguments are really not germane to what we, what is before us. Um, again, we are left with a decision. Did Mr. Tucker make a correct decision in applying, um, a notice to Mr. Vang based on the zoning code? Even, I, 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 I haven't heard or have, or have seen any evidence that is going to tell me that the answer to that question is no. I think Mr. Tucker's read of the, of the zoning code was correct, the application of it was correct, and very sadly, I'm not left with any choice other than to, uh, other than to vote no on the motion. I will, however, continue to add that this isn't a failure of the zoning department, and this isn't a failure of us, but this is clearly a failure of the ordinances themselves. And that is where the actual change has to happen, and I'm very heartened to hear that Alder Rommel is going to pursue that change so that there, we may have an, ultimately, uh, be able to see, be able to have places in Madison where people can camp. Um, and I also have to, at the, at, at the risk of ruffling feathers, and I'm really not interested, that I, that I'm not interested in ruffling, I, I, I have to also, uh, observe that the, um, the rate of speed with which this has been expedited, um, has, uh, I, I, I'm marveling at it. And I'm not blaming anybody sitting here. I certainly understand, um, political pressures, and I certainly understand that when a phone call comes from an alder or from the mayor's office or, well, pretty much those places, that, um, that things have to move post haste. I certainly hope that the remedy to this situation could also move with the same rate of speed. And with that, I yield, is there any further discussion?
No, actually, I put it very well.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Those both say no.
No.
And the motion is failed. And that comes to, do we have any communications or?
We do not.
Okay. Very well. Well, without objection and a return, thank you very much. Thank you, everybody, those who, uh, were, uh, participated and respectful as well.